Matt, City Parks Board Member.
Mike Ryan, City Council.
Susan Walkie, City Council.
Kurt Norreika, City Council.
Mike Faye with Greenworks.
Matt Hasty with Angelo Planning.
Dean Dedman, Parks Board.
Tabitha Noah with the Parks Board.
Your Board, City Council.
Taj Richardson, Parks Board.
Richard Thompson, Planning Group.
Jake Anderson, Council.
Joseph Yorin, Parks Mayor.
Don Williams, Mayor.
Thank you.
Everyone in the audience. And Deborah.
And Deborah Mitchell. Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, so that was welcome introductions and the Parks Planning Process. So who am I turning this over to?
I'm going to turn it over to Mike.
Okay, I'll start. I've met a few of you folks. My name is Mike Faye. I'm Principal at Greenworks Landscape Products. And last time I met with you, I was attended with Robin Crake, who was our project manager. So the six-month process from last February up into the end of summer. Robin's gone off to meet her passengers and she's now an employee of the Portland Parks Department. And I guess my role as Principal at Greenworks is to make sure we have smooth transitions. Kind of like what we're doing with the government laws these days. Bad joke. Okay, so Matt Hasty from Angelo Planning has been our Deputy Project Manager for the last nine months. And he's been at all the public workshops and stakeholder meetings. So since Robin's departure, we've turned over the leadership on the leading of planning effort over to Matt. And so for the last couple of months, he's been taking on that role. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, who's going to today talk about the planning process to date, what some of the priorities that you guys are wanting to look at for the park system plan, general questions and answers, and what the notion of moving the site to inclusion here in the next few weeks. With that, Matt.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
You did a better joke.
I don't know how to do that. I'm sorry. Thank you for having me here again. It's good to be here. I would say sort of like to channel Robin's occasionally, but I can't really do that very well. Robin is pretty awesome while she was working on the project. And I'm glad she at least made it most of the way through and particularly through kind of a lot of the primary recommendations in the plan that we took off of the city of Portland. So I'm here to sort of back clean up a little bit. But like Mike said, we'll talk about the process we went through, some of the key recommendations, priorities of our project advisory committee. We want to hear from folks on the park board around the room about additional priorities or other priorities they might have. And then talk to council about your priorities and sort of come out of here with a pretty good understanding of what sorts of changes we might need to make to the draft master plan that you have before you now, before bringing it back to council for approval or adoption of that document. So that's kind of where we're headed. We can get the next slide.
Matt, Mike mentioned that Deborah is on the phone.
And Deborah's on the phone. I think everybody is. I hope so. Listening in. So I'm going to suggest one change to the agenda as it was presented out and sent to you. And that is simply to sort of flip project advisory committee recommendations to come before the priority section. I think that'll sort of help us with the priorities if we've already talked about what some of the recommendations are. And I think you'll see some of the priorities actually reflected in some of the recommendations as well. So I think that'll maybe just make the flow a little more smooth and hopeful. So basically on your agendas, you're just kind of flipping items three and four. So all the same stuff, just in slightly different order. So next one. Just wanted to acknowledge all the people who worked on this project. City Council, who's here today, members of the park board, the project advisory committee, which included a number of park board members, city staff, lots of works went into this by staff, and then the consulting team. And Mike Tarra kind of already mentioned that there were a couple of other folks who provided advice to us along the way to offices architecture and creating consulting. And they're not here today. So thank you, everyone. Thanks a lot. Just in terms of the process, this is basically kind of an iterative process. We started out, actually, a little chat. So it kind of started out just getting the project started, understanding more about conditions related to parks, open space, and recreation within Lincoln City. And then went through a process of identifying such goals and a vision for the master plan and for the process. Had a community open house and a first project advisory meeting at that point to review those conditions, review those goals and that vision, understand kind of what activities are people most interested in, having now in the future or having opportunities to engage in now and in the future. Moved on to kind of what are some of the opportunities and strengths to achieve those goals and achieve that vision. Again, reviewed that with our project advisory committee. From there, we went to what are some different options for how we achieve those goals and work with those opportunities and constraints? And started to identify options for specific sites, kind of generally recommendations for particular projects or areas. Had a community open house and a pack meeting again to review all that. And then assembled everything we sort of put together so far into a draft master plan. Met, and I apologize for my head being down there in the corner. And then met with the project advisory committee again to review the draft master plan, so that was several weeks ago. The park board met after that to talk through this again and begin talking about some of their priorities that they want to make sure are reflected in the plan. We are now here today, it is November 7th, because this is an old version of the schedule, but the 21st. And the next and last step would be to bring something back to you for adoption. Again, not on the 28th, but on I believe the 12th, 12th of December. So that's kind of where we're heading. And really, along the way, our goal was to take direction, you know, as much as possible from the parks advisory committee, the parks board, and the members of the public that were involved in the process as well. And thought was at the community open house. We also had a whole series of stakeholder advice, stakeholder interviews or meetings at the front end of the project, which Deborah did an amazing job of putting together. I'll have to say probably the most intensive, or one of the one or two most intensive days of stakeholder interviews I have ever done in the last 20 years. So kudos to Deborah for putting that together. So next one. So vision, again, this was one of the first things we did in this project was create a vision and talk about what was important in terms of the existing and future open space parks and recreation system within Lincoln City. I had, it's kind of hard to see up here, but I highlighted a few words in here, well-connected and accessible facilities, geographically dispersed over the city, making sure people all over the city have opportunities to walk, to recreate, to visit open space. Really walking and bicycling and pathways and trails was, came up a lot, I think throughout the process, particularly in some of the early meetings where we were asking people what activities were important to them. Inclusive, culturally sensitive opportunities for people of all ages and backgrounds, a lot of discussion about opportunities for young people, including teenagers particularly, kind of meeting some gaps or unmet needs in that area. But also for families, you know, older adults, people with limited means. Those all came up in those stakeholder interviews and throughout the process. Really celebrating nature and the city's natural areas. The city, I think, has been incredibly supportive in creating open spaces, acquiring and creating and improving open spaces for people to use here. And, you know, you've got an amazing asset in terms of your features and waterways. So making sure that you're continuing to provide access to those areas in partnership with the state and others. So next one. Having a range of indoor and outdoor recreational activities, active recreation education, making sure we're meeting current needs but also future needs as we plan for the future and implement this master plan, making sure we've got ability to park at locations or facilities, amenities, both for people that live here but also for people who visit here. And along those lines, helping support the city's economic base of tourism. We want this plan to be ambitious but also something that can be achieved and implemented by the city over the next 20 years in partnership with the other folks who helped provide opportunities in the city. So that's the vision. It's kind of a wordy one, but I think it's great. It really packed with a lot of different dots that came from people during the process. So next one. So now I'm going to kind of walk through some of the recommendations from the plan. One of the things we didn't talk too much about at the last project advisory committee meeting, but there's a chunk of space in the plan that related to it, is existing improvements to existing facilities. So I knew this would be pretty tough to read on the screen, so I brought handouts to this. This is a summary of about 10 pages within the plan, pages I think 121 to 130, I believe. And it identifies for each existing park in the, in the community or recreational facility, what some of the opportunities are there for future improvements, also what some of the challenges are. And so you'll see in some cases, a lot of really common themes, like wayfinding signage, that's kind of what this column is. So a lot of places could benefit from that. Some of these are pretty.
Does that mean those places do not have?
It means either it's not a place or it could be improved. So these are not just necessarily brand new things, but improvements. So I think, I think the thought was that all of those places that have dots could benefit from either new or improved wayfinding. And I have to kind of go back into the body of the plan to talk about specific.
And is that the case with all of these dots? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, we're looking at either there's something there, but it could be improved or it is lacking in some cases. And again, I'd have to kind of go back in and look in that 10 pages in the plan to tell exactly what. Yeah, so I didn't want to spend a ton of time on individual, each individual facility, but did want to just point out that there was a fair bit of attention in terms of us looking at these facilities early on and then talking about potential improvements to them. And one of the things over on the far left column, there's a couple of facilities where we think you're going to benefit from some kind of more detailed master planning process. Not a ton of these, a lot of these are kind of, I'm going to say straightforward enough improvements that wouldn't necessarily require a big planning process, certainly some more detailed design and planning, but not a large-scale planning process to determine what might be needed in these places. So again, I'm not going to go through all of these in detail, but I did want to present this to you. And also note that this table is a draft. We just kind of put it together just to kind of highlight some of this. But it summarizes information that was already in the plan in those 10 pages or so in that section. So.
13. 14. Oh, 13 is in State Park, the other side.
I think so. And I'm not.
I'm sorry, 14 and 15.
I'm not going to be. That's super powerful about every one of these dots, so I'll tell you that right now. But I'll do my best to keep it out.
14 and 15 seem good.
Repetitive. Yeah, that can be, they do, they look to LA. The River, yeah. So that's why I often say this is a draft and probably need to fix this up. But it was a way to kind of try to quickly highlight some of the improvements we identified potentially to existing facilities.
Matt?
Yes?
I think the reason I showed up twice is there was talk about projects on either side, 101.
I will.
West Side.
That's right. And there are sort of different sets of dots in them. Number 14 just shows up as a couple of things.
So 14 would be west.
It's the opposite, yeah.
14 is east. And that's up for discussion.
Can you move a little bit more about the River in particular way around the presentation? I guess any other just comments on this? One thing on number 22, we have it as State Park, and I can't remember the name. I'm sure it has a name, but that's the only non-descriptive one. Seems like every other one, yeah, I know where those are.
It's Cutlass Creek. And it is Coffee Creek.
Oh, it is Coffee Creek, right? Maybe in some of these couple cities? Yeah, that's a good idea.
So just to answer what Matt said, the idea was that when we're doing a system plan, we're just, we're identifying the needs and we're identifying future program. We obviously didn't do a site diagram for 1 through 25. It would be exhaustive and it would lengthen the schedule considerably. But we do want to identify program elements in here. So when you do set a priority, you'll say, yeah, let's really take on number 11, we've got a park. We've got a program with some items in there that are providing direction to the city staff as to what you just want to see hidden there. And then those lineups will come after that.
And again, we also in that same section of the plan identified some potential constraints where, you know, it might be photography, it might be kind of limited access via the street, et cetera. So you get into that section of the plan and see some of that in there too. And we didn't incorporate the constraints in this table, but we did incorporate some of the opportunities for the public to sort of. All right. I'm going to keep going unless you do interrupt me at any time. So unless anybody interrupts or raises their hand, we'll kind of keep talking away. All right. Excellent. So kind of next thing to talk about are, the next couple of slides are, I don't, core facilities and new facilities. These are really neighborhood and community parks. Now, in a couple cases, these coincide with locations where there's something else. So Rhodes End, for instance, is a state facility, but the idea there and putting it into this section of the plan was to talk about improvements that might provide some neighborhood benefits or amenities or ability for people from the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood to use this park, that park too. So just kind of, we're, and on each of these, there's a couple, several pairs of slides. We're going to start at the south and then go to the north, which is kind of weird for me. I always want to start at the north, but we're going to start at the south, I think to one of these. So in terms of the recommendations and really kind of some of the priorities for the southern part of town, one, we heard from a lot of people that there is a significant gap in facilities in the southern part of town. So meeting those needs, developing really, for the most part, new parks in this part of town is very important. So, and I'll again, show you some priorities a little later, but that's particularly important. And people also mentioned that particularly if it's difficult to develop a sort of larger community or neighborhood park at least, try to have some pocket parks in this area and really throughout town. But that's sort of another way to try to provide facilities at that neighborhood level or neighborhood scale. So those were a few things people said, and I'll talk more about specific facility priorities in a little bit. The other thing people said at the last pack meeting was that if the city has difficulty acquiring the school district property at Spilest and the Agnes Creek, neighborhood park would become more important, relatively more important, when we kind of look at those priorities in a little bit. So those were a few comments about neighborhood parks. And the circles, the smaller circles are opportunity sites or areas for neighborhood parks, the big circle for a community park. Community park's going to be a larger park, 10 to 20 acres, amenities that serve people in a larger part of the community. Neighborhood parks, you know, in someplace people can walk to, play equipment, picnic tables, some open space, et cetera. So that's next one. In terms of the northern part of town, relatively speaking, this part of town is better served with some of those factor facilities. The place where you see the circles is primarily up in the villages, which is a location where you're likely to see a significant portion of the growth that will occur in the city simply because of the amount of land that's up there. And the fact that the city owns that land represents, represents an opportunity in terms of not needing to acquire land. So we had identified opportunities for some combination of a community and/or neighborhood parks up there. What we heard from the project advisory committee was that a community park up there makes more sense as a first priority, again, to serve a larger area and because of the size of the area and the fact that there's the ability to do more than just kind of what you might do in a neighborhood park, as that area continues to grow longer term and one or more neighborhood parks can be included there as well. As I mentioned earlier, and we'll kind of look at a schematic of it, Rhodes End is a state facility, but there's some opportunity there to provide amenities for people in the neighborhood. So it's meeting kind of not just a, it's not just meeting the needs of visitors, but also of folks who live in that area as well. And then curious, community, and community centers, improvements are a priority as well. That's one of the things we heard from the advisory committee, particularly some kind of expansion that allows for creation of a teen center or teen facility that's really kind of missing there. And we also heard pretty clearly that early in the project, we talked about perhaps a combined teen and senior facility, and we heard now those really need to be separate facilities. So, next one. So a couple of specific facilities that we looked at, I think when I made this presentation to the project advisory committee, we kind of looked at some of these as destination facilities. This is really, this facility is really one of those core facilities. It's a community park. So this is at the southern end of town, and this is one where we kind of laid out a really conceptual schematic diagram of what might occur at this, at this site. So you've got parking, picnic areas, soccer fields, playground, dog park, and multi-use courts. So you've got kind of a full range of things. And I circled it up at the top because there's two different projects shown on this map, but this slide's really focusing on the, the community park facility there and not on the sort of southern half of it. So this was really, and you'll see it in a table in a little bit, the highest priority of all the specific projects that we looked at when we did sort of a ranking of these among the project advisory committee. And during that meeting, we also asked, is there anything here that you think really isn't necessary or needed? People said, no, everything that you showed there is needed. We wouldn't cut anything out of that particular facility. So that's that one. Next one. Jumping way up to the north, the Rhodes End. And I want to mention that all these graphics are the graphics that are in the master plan now. So the next step after this meeting will be to update the master plan, including updating these graphics to reflect what we've heard from the parks, the project advisory committee, the parks board, and the city council. But right now, what you're seeing is what's currently in the plan. And kind of what we heard from folks at that last pack meeting was, and I've said it now a couple times, focused on the neighborhood amenities or facilities here, playground, picnic tables, ADA beach access, those are the most important elements of this park. And some of the other things that you see, kind of the interpretive boardwalk, potentially the shelter, those are maybe less important. And so again, focus on the neighborhood aspects. And then the other thing we heard was, it's really important to get the state to help pay for this, this state facility, and they should be helping pay for whatever improvements remain here. And I think we also heard, if I'm not mistaken, improve the restaurants at this facility. So that, what goes for some comments on that one? Next one. For all of these facilities, except for a couple of larger trail facilities, we came up with some very rough cost estimates. And these are the cost estimates through my head for these particular facilities that we've just been looking at. I was hearing some. Deborah saying something?
I don't think it's to us. Deborah, are you speaking to us or is that just background?
Oh, sorry, I thought I answered on you. Can you move the speaker a little bit? Does the box a little closer to the speaker?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
How many of your time do you?
So I'm not going to go into these cost estimates in a lot of detail, but I will say a couple of things. One, a number of these, everywhere where you see $400,000 to $700,000, those are neighborhood parks, that's just based on a typical unit cost per acre for that type of park, based on other parks that folks at Greenworks have designed, helped manage, construction of, et cetera. Some of these other parks, the old school site, let's see, the Rhodes End improvements, those two in particular are based on the concepts that we showed you up on the screen. And there are pretty quick revision based on the changes that I talked about or the priorities that we heard at the pack meeting. So if you look in the plan, you're going to see some different numbers. These have basically gone down since we had that pack meeting, based on what people said was important, at least in terms of the Rhodes End and the old school site. We used to have kind of a combined cost estimate for that at Spooner Creek. We split those out, and that's sort of this one specific to the old school site. So next one. The other types of things we talked about in this plan in particular are safety, connectivity, livability projects, which are basically trail projects, trails or connectivity projects. And the two things, so in the south, the priority is completion of the Head to Bay Trail. An alignment has not been defined for that in the southern part of town, so that would need to be. There are a number of local connections that you see on this map and those maps in the plan. Those are generally identified in the city's transportation plans, either the system plan, the pedestrian bike plan, or the city's ADA plan. So those are there. Next one. And then in terms of the northern part of town, there are some gaps in the Head to Bay Trail that exists up there in parks, that there's a gap that needs to be filled. And then there's the Devil's Lake Loop Trail. One of the comments we got heard in the pack meeting was, that could be a great amenity, not just for people who live here, but also for visitors, especially if you make that really a high-quality kind of trail experience for folks. We also asked people about even priorities for specific local connections and heard that that connection to Rhodes End should be a high priority. It's been on the books for a long time, and that ought to be implemented. So let's work sort of the general comments on those types of projects. Next one. Now I'm going to talk about just a couple other projects that kind of fall under this, not sort of so much neighborhood and community parks, but destination projects, things that are maybe drawing people from outside the city. So we put together this concept for the area near Spooner Creek here. And what we heard from our project advisory committee was, lovely concept, it's not the highest priority, it ought to be really thought of more as a long-term priority, and you need to split it out from what we were showing up here at the old school site. We heard that part of the reason for that are some challenges to implementing this. There's existing housing down here in the form of a manufactured home park. So that would affect obviously that housing to develop this. What we did here is that in the short term, creating a pedestrian crossing is important and ought to be pursued if we don't do anything else down in here in the short term. So that was kind of what we heard about that one. And Deborah, can you remind me exactly where the pedestrian crossing would be?
It would be over Spooner Creek, so Cutlass City would be, have safe passage into it's active.
So down here, basically. Yeah. So that's kind of what we heard about that one, that's important in the short term. The rest of it can really be farther out in the future. Next one. And I am getting close to being done talking at you, just to see if I can capture a lot of my slides. We talked about the D River, and we looked at a couple of different options. We called it the low-impact option and the high-impact option. You can kind of get a sense of that from just how much area is kind of encompassed in this, the concept diagram on these two slides. And at the project advisory committee meeting, we identified essentially a hybrid option to, to move forward in the master plan. So go to the next slide, we'll talk about what that would include. And so again, it's a hybrid of those two. I'm going to look at the words and I'm actually going to go back to the diagram because it's easier to sort of talk about it from the diagram. All right, let's flip back to slides, sorry about that. Okay, so one of the things we heard was retaining the parking here. It's really important for a lot of people to be able to park directly there, to be able to view the ocean from this spot. So that's important. We heard that the things we showed here would mean some existing uses and buildings and businesses going away, and that would be very expensive, disruptive, impactful if this area were to redevelop in the future. And that's, and the folks redeveloping and wanting to see something like that, that would be okay, but we're not going to necessarily propose the city actively doing that. If it redevelops, people did say they'd want to see a trail along the river. People also said the city owns most or if not all this area up here, and having some improvements up here would make a improvements up here would make a lot of sense in terms of expanded parking areas, particularly to sort of larger events in the city. So that was important to folks. And people really did like the idea of a bridge across the D River, not, wouldn't necessarily be right here, but somewhere in here, some kind of pedestrian bridge, especially if you're putting in conditional parking here. If you're doing that, then these pedestrian improvements are important if you're kind of bringing people across here and over here unless you were able to take them under the highway somehow. So those were sort of the things that people thought were most important. Improving the access down to the beach was also important, and improving restrooms was important. And again, make sure the state is partnering in funding of improvements here. So those were the things that we heard about this particular site that people on the advisory committee wanted to see worked into a hybrid and updated concept for this site. Now let's get ahead to, for Curcys Park and Community Center, we identified a variety of improvements. Trail connection up here to Northeast 27, a BMX pump track, kids' skilled bike course in here. I talked about this teen center and senior center expansion on the site. We talked about a potential zero and three wave machine in the community center as, as part of an expansion. What we heard at the PAC meeting was just expand the pool instead of building that wave machine. And we asked people, is there anything here that isn't important? Is there anything that, that ought to not be included? And we heard everything people thought here was important. So, and this was a fairly high priority, and we'll kind of get to those priorities slides in a minute. Got all that? Next one. So, cost for these, we came up with a very rough cost for the Curcys improvements, essentially based on what, on a, on a cost per square foot basis and the approximate size of that. So it can vary really, really significantly. It was in the order of four million dollars. And the other improvements-
That included the building.
That included the building, yeah. So, the other improvements were somewhere around two million. So depending on the size of that, let's say two to four million for the, the expansion, and about two million for the rest of the things we talked about there. So that's a pretty big picture, kind of. The D River hybrid, in the draft master plan that shows up, is between like one and six million dollars. We, really quick initial estimate of that hybrid is about two to two and a half million. And then Schooner was a big-ticket item. Again, what's being talked about there in the short term is much, much less than that. So, those were the rough cost estimates there. Next one. So the next, and then the plan also talks about a number of recreational facilities or activities that would, some of them could occur on city, in city facilities, but they would really likely, most likely be operated by somebody else. And these are really more destination-type things. Mountain biking, some kind of zip line adventure challenge course, canopy walk. We talked about potentially the area in the villages as a home for all of those, simply because of the size, the terrain, the topography up there. Couple of sites would potentially lend themselves to paddling, a paddling exploration center, Devil's Lake or Schooner Park. And also talked about an outdoor indoor walk park and a wave park, a lot of people have seen it, Kelly Slater's Wave Park in Hawaii. And maybe we shouldn't have said likely not feasible, but from a land acquisition standpoint, that would be our sort of initial thought about that. So, those are not things the city would go out and build on its own. Those are things that the city would partner with somebody else to build and operate, but potentially using city facilities for land. So, next one. So, just to kind of reiterate some of the priorities we heard from the, the project advisory committee, I've got this slide with a few bullets and then some slides that show the specific facilities. So maintaining improvement in neighborhood and community parks, a high priority. Providing programs and activities for kids, including teens, talked about the teen center. Addressing needs and gaps in southern Lincoln City. And I don't know how much we talked about this as, as a committee. I actually did miss a couple of committee meetings. But it came up a lot in the community meetings was opportunities for walking and bicycling. When we asked people what activities, you know, you want, you engage in that, want to engage in that or in the future, that one was at the top of the list just about every time. So I think that's a priority. Next one.
Say, Matt?
Yes?
Could you go back one?
Yes, yes.
Joseph, do these address the issues that you raised at the last meeting?
And I will say, the next slide after these tables is just to invite the parks board to tell us what they think is important. So, I don't want to short-circuit that, but-
Those are the areas that I think we need to address.
Thank you.
All right, next one. So these were just, we did an exercise during that project advisory committee meeting that was a little on the brutal side, but I think it was hopefully helpful. We kind of walked through every one of these, and we asked people to tell us, relatively speaking, should this project be at the highest priority end, which is actually a one? So little numbers are better. That's not always the way these exercises are done, but in this case, a little number is better, or on the lower priority end. So, of the sort of core services and facilities, neighborhood and community parks, that old school site, southern part of town, top priority, Side Creek is number two. The neighborhood park at the school district site, Spiglass, was number three. I still have my arm there, so I'm sorry it says country. Villages, first priority is a community park, second neighborhood park, roads end and Agnes Creek. Again, one of the comments was Agnes Creek would potentially be a higher priority if one of these other projects couldn't support it. Next one. And then in terms of the other facilities that I reviewed, Curcys improvements was tops among those. And kind of not at the very top of the list if you looked at all these together, but near the top, at the Bay Trail next, D River, followed by Devil's Loop and Loop, and the Schooner Creek was a pretty distant one at the bottom. It was like the only one that was, was above the three, in terms of priorities. So that's what I think we heard from the project advisory committee in terms of their priorities during those meetings. But, next slide, and I asked the same question. Chester asks, which is, you know, what else? What did we miss? Or did these reflect what I think the parks board talked about and things based on their last meeting, of course? Other decisions?
Okay, the parks board in its last meeting, and I'll accept personal responsibility for this because this is my priority. I hammered, and I'll continue to hammer on the fact that we're running to the end, or we passed the end of our last parks master plan four or five years ago. And using the estimates that this planning process has come up with, we are currently, for the people that live in Lincoln City, short, somewhere between twelve and twenty-two parks. And we're talking small, many parks, neighborhood parks, and community parks. Now, we're putting together a plan that's supposed to last for twenty years. I don't think those gaps in services are getting enough attention in the current plan. Not saying that the plan needs to be scrapped or anything else, but the priorities in it need to shift. Now, Greenworks has come up with a document that has started to show that, but I still don't think we're adequately accepting the responsibility that we have kind of let fall through the cracks over the last five to ten years. Can anyone remember the last time that Lincoln City installed a new park? The last thing I-
I think it would have to be open spaces.
Open spaces, yes. Now, if you'll go into the document and you'll look at pages one twenty-three through one twenty-six, that's where you find the calculations of what we should have. And when I start kicking out those numbers, I'm not pulling them out of the air, I'm using Greenworks as figures, and I'm also not trying to be too extreme. I went right straight down the middle between their minimum and maximum, and projected the number of parks that we don't have according to the recommendations, times the number of acres that are supposed to be in those parks, and that's what I come up with. So if you want to go into those pages in the document, you'll see what it comes up with.
It was, just so you never-
Right. And just for visual purposes, the one in Deborah's right hand there, those top three categories in red, the red indicates gaps in services. And we all know geographically that those gaps in services are pushed out to the north and south in the community. Now, the recommendations that we've put a lot of effort into in terms of additions or chances, opportunities to improve currents, those are great, but the only one that addresses my concern is that Taft property. Everything else on this page would continue to contribute to the lack of services to the people in the north and the south. They overemphasize where we already have very good facilities. Not that they couldn't be better. I mean, you can always make something better, and everything can stand updates just because of, of time. But my concern is about the kids and the families in Lincoln City that live here right now. I hear complaints all the time about modern kids, they never get outside, they sit in and watch their screens and play with their controllers and this kind of stuff. And I accept a little bit of responsibility for that if we don't give them places to So I'll keep bringing those numbers up and I'll keep pushing. As I say, I'm, I'm recommending that we, that we recommend to the council that you approve the plan, but with some revisions and some adjustments in terms of the priorities. But you have a parks board, I think, that's willing to take those on for you and can come up with a, a good plan.
Stay agreeing with the number percent?
Yeah, I wanted to join the parks board because of specifically the number of community parks that seem to be missing from the last parks plan. I reviewed that a few years ago when I was interested in getting a dog park in the city, and seeing those numbers of suggestions and how many we have, it's surprising. I love the amount of open space we have, and I think we're doing a good job of utilizing that. And with the idea that walking is a top priority for people, that means that we're finding ways to get people into our open spaces, which helps that a little bit, but there's still a clear gap in specifically kid-oriented community parks.
Somewhere between, depending on which numbers you want to pick, between ten and twenty are walkable parks, places where families could take their young kids without getting in a car. The destinations, almost every time we look at one of those destination projects, somebody says, we can't handle the traffic we have now. Why would we want to put more people into those areas? We can't handle the traffic now. This, these small pocket neighborhood parks would allow us to push that out into other areas in the city. And while my priority is quality of life for Lincoln City residents right now, you can't tell me that having a couple of walkable parks sprinkled around wouldn't help people with their BRDs as well. But that wouldn't make those properties even more valuable.
So, Joseph, did I, I heard you say you think that some of the recommendations that we talked about in terms of new neighborhood and community parks help kind of-
We're getting there. We're getting there.
And I think our, I would say our goal partly there in terms of picking some of those locations, or suggesting some of those, is just to help you guys build on what you have in terms of where you already own property, where there are areas and related facilities that people can get to and from, and recognizing that it's expensive to buy land, it's in limited supply, and I think that, you know, again, where you can't manage to get enough land for a neighborhood park, then some kind of pocket park makes a lot of sense, you know? So that way, I think, could really supplement some of the locations we identified for potential neighborhood and community parks.
Well, and it's also been pointed out that the city owns lots and lots of parcels of land-
Scattered around.
-that could be used to develop those or could be traded off-
Yeah.
-to fund other sites.
Got, somebody said, maybe it was you, I don't know who it was, but somebody provided Deborah with a map of that. I kind of, my thumb grabbed it.
Oh, no, we asked for that, but we haven't received it yet, so-
So we have-
You can send it to me, too.
I do have to, and, and that's something I think we might want to include in the plan to, as an appendix or an attachment, just kind of give people a sense of where the properties are.
You asked about the, the last park. Actually, the last park that we did, I was sitting here racking my brain, was the kids' park in Fetter City. And the neighborhood basically built that themselves, and now the Parks Department is driven-
Do you, Wes, do you remember when that was?
I was on a council the first time, so, I, well, I don't remember. About fifteen years ago.
Last thing I could find was the community center, and that was nineteen seventy-eight.
But it, I mean, well, I was thinking of neighborhood parks.
Yeah.
And that was, but that was a, that the neighbors got tired of all the junk on it, and started clearing it and basically turned it into a park for the neighborhood. I have, when I was on the planning commission years and years ago, and the first time I was on the council, I advocated that we should be working on buying land for a community park in most of these areas would be a constructivity. But there are a lot of lots here, there, and everywhere that instead of building a wedge-shaped four-story BRD, we could have bought those and turned those into pocket parks. So, I mean, you know, it basically is what we want. I mean, all you need, you know, a swing set, for sure, you know, or a monkey bar or something like that. When my kids were little, we lived on Thirty-third, and they would go down, they'd have to go all the way down to Thirty-first, the pump station, to use a playground. Usually, they went down to Cho's property, Surf Tides, and they would play, tag through the, the little forest of, original forest of Coast Pines, or they would go up where he had parking and stuff, and they would play, you know, what do you call it? What do you call it? You throw a ball or somebody, Dodgeball-
Dodgeball.
-and stuff, with other neighborhood kids, so.
Those are the opportunities that I think we need to be emphasizing and that we've let slip for, since the last ten, thirteen years.
And I, I question, you know, in one of your things, Side Creek keeps coming up, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out exactly who the heck that's going to serve. Side Creek is, is down, or the side tree, open space area is down at the bottom of that hill going out. Now, where are we talking about putting a park?
Now, what's the property that we looked at that has the old boathouse and ramp? What is that area called?
That's Tide Avenue.
Tide Avenue is probably a better description of the area that we're looking at.
Okay, that makes more sense.
But Side Creek happened to be the closest open space, so that's why the title got there. But those people in particular, in that neighborhood, have absolutely nothing in terms of-
Yeah.
...parking and rec.
That makes more sense.
And that's where your, your map would come in handy, because there are some empty lots that sound like steel.
There are some good opportunities.
Yeah, and in some cases, that was, we used an existing facility as sort of location. We didn't mean right at it, but in that- mean right at it, but in that direction.
So Joseph, to be clear, if I want to paraphrase what you were saying, you want to see more opportunities for many pocket parks throughout the neighborhoods that are underserved and neighborhood parks for kids for informal play and, let me finish, and not really creating destination-type parks like, a community park is a destination park. If you put a community park, you're just between a community park and a neighborhood park. Community parks have parking lots, which means people drive there to use it. So what I'm hearing you say is you want more in the neighborhood, walkable opportunities for kids, whether it's a small mini park or even a neighborhood park with a play, a play, a playfield of some sort. Is that what?
Without taking away from that number one priority of a community park in town.
Oh, okay.
That's still, as far as I'm concerned, that's the number one priority. Then, because that will also help to address that issue of the lack of recreation for current residents. That's the first place we should start, I think.
And I think on the difference between a lot of mini parks and a community park in any part of town, feasibility comes into play. Like, is it more feasible to have a lot of mini parks than that's the route we should do? And I think that that clarification is kind of, I didn't see it when I wrote through the plans, so that might be.
Well, let's talk about that because a mini park and a neighborhood park are quite different. A neighborhood park, you have an opportunity for a pathway, perhaps a shelter, maybe a picnic table, and certainly an area for informal, you know, throwing the frisbee or the football around. Mini parks generally are smaller and it's maybe a playground, a bench, no party, no restrooms, you know, really smaller scale. And I think we are, we have limitations in Lincoln City with the size of the properties that are available. So I think it has to be opportunity-based, you know, do what you can.
I think that's what I just heard. In terms of feasibility, it's like, yeah, what are the opportunities to either build a neighborhood park if you can and can't? Look for opportunities for mini parks or pocket parks.
That's, yeah, that's what I was trying to.
And how long would, it hasn't been for movement with the Taft property? Because we can also see if that's going to be here, you know, drug out for many years before we acquire it, then it would be worth investing in pocket parks in the meanwhile. I don't want to lose sight of the teen center, indoor space, just putting it out there.
Anything else from anybody, our board or council? I think the next slide was councilors, do you have anything to add, anything else that's particularly important to you? Go to the next slide.
I thought the recommendations were, were good. You know, the, the, I thought that was a good priority.
I appreciated the page on maintenance. I think we've got a serious issue with maintenance, not just restrooms, but maintenance in general in all of our parks. And we do have to ensure that they're clean, safe and attractive. And that's going to cost money. And I appreciated all the opportunities for funding that you presented us. Two or three pages here that.
Yeah, and I have a couple of slides to talk a little bit more about that. We can, we can talk about this really briefly.
One of the things that I think is useful, you know, what I'm pleased to see in this panel is you're hitting a lot of different major goals. There's this idea of perhaps creating a new neighborhood community park. There's the idea of filling in the gaps where we don't provide services for our kids or our neighborhoods. That's a big deal, maybe the most important. And the third is connecting everything to the trail system that's safe, reliable and understandable. But that first one is really about creating the community parks, the destination parks. I just want to put on my other hat and when I work with communities around the state of Oregon on their park systems, everybody gets to point to one park that's kind of a flagship park that identifies that community. And I'm not saying that that's a priority here, but I do want to bring it up. Hood River has their new waterfront park in the Columbia River, Airway and Water State that's been through Hood River, talks about it because it provides access to the river. The city of Benin has a new whitewater park on the Deschutes River that is an economic tourism draw. You go around different communities around the state and they, they have kind of a flagship park that they kind of point to and say, it expresses their idealism, it expresses their connection between the citizens and their park system. We can't do that with our other systems, our water, our sewer, our other systems that we own and operate, but our park system is our connection that really creates an opportunity for us to talk about what we value above ground that people can see and enjoy. So I like these priorities and I think you've done a good job of hitting broadly the various areas that most communities talk about. And I just, you know, before this is said and done, make a decision about, is there anything in the park system that's going to really get you excited about creating an identity for the city of Lincoln City? And it could be any of the things we're talking about. It doesn't have to be a flagship park, doesn't have to be Deep River, it could be just a wonderful trail system, but something that you guys can look back and say, we connected the dots and provided neighborhood parks for our kids, but we also did something else. And so when you look at these recommendations, be thinking about, what is it that really is the glue that holds us together and that you're excited about? And I don't know what that is, I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could throw one other thing out. One thing that's come up lately after your meetings, I think there's been a possibility of a need for something like a festival grounds where there's a large group that wants to come and have a particular kind of festival or something and there's no place where it's big enough for that. And that's something we may want to consider adding or talking about at least. I mean, if you wanted to add anything on that.
Discussions we've had internally, we're probably talking about something to the people, for example, if there were the area intact or school building parts, if there was a way to look fencing around or, you know, if we wanted to bring the healthy games in, that's a discussion that's going on right now. Probably just we don't have the work, but we're talking about doing a big festival based on people can see land, can see kitchen, bringing up pieces of past back for the weekend of the summer type of thing. You know, I don't see it as a park that would be there to host events every weekend all the time, but it's something with an uplex ability to where if we had something that grew to the point where 5,000 people showed up, do we have a place to do it?
County fairgrounds. Okay. So something to potentially mention. So anything else just on the, from the council on priorities or particular projects, comments?
First of all, I really like what I see under landscaping, upstream restoration, sustainable stormwater facility, restoration plans, removing invasive species, native plants, shade trees. Those are wonderful. And I appreciate all the work that went into that. One of my concerns would be conservation of wildlife in town. And despite the nice things in landscaping, I think maybe you could be a bit more sensitive to that, you know? Also, I'm not saying it isn't, but making sure that there's pathways for the wildlife to get from one place to another. And also conservation of trees, global warming is an issue. We need all those trees. Those are my only comments. Really grateful that wonderful work has been done.
Great. Those are all right. Thank you. Those are great comments.
Just a clarification if I can. Joseph referenced a standard, I guess. So admittedly, I'm uninformed as to there must be a standard, a guide about parks in communities.
So there's a lot of different ways to kind of address that level of service or standard approach. Your existing parks plan, previously about the park plan, did that through a parks per, or park acre per thousand people standard. And that's what's kind of referenced in that one section of the document that Joseph was talking about. I think the approach, more the approach we take in working with this committee was making sure that you had geographic coverage, not so much number of parks or acres of parks, but that you had good geographic coverage, that you had neighborhood parks that serve virtually every neighborhood, that you had community parks that serve the entire city. If you can't do that, again, back to the notion of pocket parks, but not so much to build X number of parks or exactly X number of acres, but to make sure you've got things geographically dispersed and then you've got amenities within those parks that meet the needs of people in the neighborhoods and in the community. So I think that was probably more the approach we took in terms of some of these recommendations. We did identify if you were going to use an acreage standard, kind of what that might look like, whether you were using the previous park plan standard or the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department standard. In large part, the, kind of nationally, they've got this, where the National Parks and Recreation Association used to publish standards that were sort of for every community about you should have X number of acres of neighborhood park per thousand people. Really kind of got away from that and focused more on geographic proximity and amenities that meet the needs of the people in your community and what they want to have. And so we do still talk about those standards related to numbers of parks and acres, but I think the focus of the recommendations is more on that geographic proximity and having amenities that people consider important in this community. And you've got, and also like, since you're building on the assets you have, you've got one huge asset, which is seven miles of beach, right? Not everybody's got that, so access to that is really important and that's where a lot of that, those connectivity improvements come in.
Well, thank you for that because I, granted, scanned all of this stuff and I didn't see a huge reference to that Midwest of us and the access to, and I guess I would have and would hope that we would take advantage of what's given to us and that's that seven and a half miles of beach. Whether that means more and more attractive access points, viewpoints, things to utilize that. The other is, you know, we're rural. I hate using standards of urban areas for rural. So I'm not sure, that's why I wanted you to talk about a little bit, about where your standards come from and what it is.
Yeah, that's.
And then we have that beach, we have huge open space that the community got behind.
Absolutely.
And we, as a municipality, have been trying to connect the seven and a half miles of our community through sidewalks, of which we've not been successful yet. So I'm a little bit concerned about diverting resources to a, to a different trail, but they usually turn into cement sidewalks, when we haven't connected our whole community. And so I would hope that there could be a vision of using that need to connect where people live to where they need to walk and stores and other amenities to somehow make it a pleasant walk, but not where we're spending, having to put two sidewalks, you know, two trails.
And I kind of focused on some of those kind of bigger ticket connectivity or trail projects, head to bay and that old lake loop, but there's a long list of local connections and a map that shows all those, or a couple of maps that shows in the plan. And so, and the recommendation is to make or implement those connections as well. They are identified in your other planning documents.
Yeah, but now where you're, here's, it's about choices, and this is where I'm going is, I wish these were prioritized on the parks list. If they could be viewed, if the sidewalk connecting Holmes Road to Safeway, you know, it's a nice walk and a lot of people make it, you know, if it was safer. But, you know, where does that fit in the economic expenditure priority list that's, you know, certainly coming here? And that, that's what, you know, as someone who's going to have to bode on these kind of things, would need to know that I'm not giving up, you know, a park, I'm already trail, I'm.
So I think we can emphasize that a little more. I mean, in terms of looking at all those and prioritizing among them, I don't know, I'm not sure if that's where you're going, but we simply didn't have time to do that with the group. I mean, it's too many of them to be able to do that. And they've already been to some degree prioritized in some of those other planning processes. So there is information in your transportation system plan and your bike and pedestrian plan about priorities on this. We kind of refer back to those just given the resources we have available to us here. So I totally, a point well taken, that's, this sort of an explanation of how we got through it. But I think.
I would hope that the park board would be, I guess I'm pleading with you guys, to also look at that stuff to make our job a little easier so that we're not, you know, when we have to make choices, you know, it's not viewed as we're, you know, not in favor of trails when we're putting in a sidewalk or something, have to make that decision.
And we just asked at our last meeting, because we don't even know where the city is with things like sidewalks. And so we would like to know those things too, what are the priorities of the city so that we can make appropriate recommendations?
One other comment, you know, you mentioned the national standards, you know, which less than three is out of the basis. And that's answered that question pretty thoroughly, but just, these are guidelines and like you said, we're a rural community here, not a highly dense urban community. So these are guidelines, you know, not every kind of facility that's listed in these guidelines are appropriate for this town. And then that's why we're having this, these meetings with the community. These are guidelines, if you're designing a brand new city out in the middle of green pasture, you'd want one park every quarter mile. We're dealing with a community that's been built out, it's got its own topography, its own demands and interests from the citizens that are participating. And while these guidelines, as Matt mentioned, they're kind of, we're kind of getting away from them. We're starting to go more towards the proximity issue. We need a neighborhood park within a half mile of our homes and we need a community park, ball fields, within a mile or two of our homes. That's where the efforts have been going into the recreation planning, is more, not per thousand, you know, how many, 10 acres per thousand people, it's more how close and how quickly can I get there? But it, it does point out deficits. And so, you know, Joseph and Taj have mentioned that there's some deficits within the neighborhoods and I think she's been hearing that loud and clear around this table. So where this points that out and makes the case for it, we use it. But these are just guidelines and, you know, let's hold the camera over here, get the same cap to me.
Really? I heard you a little different here. If I had a hammer, I'd use it. That's what I thought.
No, I actually think, you know, I, I use the standards because those are numbers and I'm a data-driven kind of guy and it made sense to me to make my point using those. Now, I do think that Green Works in their geographic focus ended up covering those. So I really. So I really don't think there's conflict. If you look at the maps in the plan and we were to add the community park in the south and the neighborhood parks that they suggest, and then we take the city holdings already and we spot those pocket parks around, we'll have it covered. And then, of course, my idea is you guys will get real anxious to put sidewalks so people can get there.
Good. Thank you.
The only thing I would grasp is weather. We've got 197 days of rain and when it's not raining, it's windy and when it's not windy, it's foggy. And I just want to see anything that's built, like we're talking roads and, I mean, how do we cooperate with that? How do we, we make a nice park, but you can't even stand it upright in it? I think our most utilized park in the city is the community center. Do we just look at outdoor spaces or do we look to, you know, increasing another indoor facility, creating an indoor facility or more cover structures that protect from the wind and the rain?
As parents, we've been lobbying for that also to have covered parks, covered playgrounds.
And any construction that goes on recognizes high winds and can still, you can still use the park if you've got 20, 30 miles of winds.
Do we know what a park is from the plan? Is it a park or a park?
Probably like a picnic bench and a swing set would be like a 50 by 100 lot, a little sandbox, something where two families can meet and a couple of families can use it for 20, 30 minutes and then fill in and come home.
The plan doesn't really go into the minute details. I think that the plan is to leave that up to the parks board in the future, I suppose, and we'll give it to them when we can start to see what a park looks like.
There are definitions in the plan for every one of those. And when you talk about park at park, it says a structure because the place is that small or bench, two benches or a picnic table. I mean, that's the size that we're talking about as far as a place for a family to lock their kids down and toss them off. We're talking generally smaller kids and the very younger families needing that very close access to get the kids outside. Then you go up from there and the definition for a neighborhood park says playgrounds or and/or outdoor covered courts and/or a sports field and/or multiple picnic tables. So down the road, as we develop each one of those sites, we'd have to look at what's close, what's the greatest need? Do we need a swing set or do we need a picnic bench in this little, so many square foot mini lot? So yeah, all of those little details would still be, have to work out in the future.
You know, I can't help it and I'm not arguing this stuff, I like it, but as you were reading those definitions, you know what, I was conjuring, again, an urban community is trying to or has now high density living and there aren't the backyards and the swings and everything And so thus we need the corner parks or the neighborhood park or whatever you call it, small one structure to get kids out and give them the place. All right. You know, it just, it blows my mind that in rural Lincoln City with the beach and our forests, our open space, you know, I, there's a lot of space.
But I guess not everybody, not every family, not every kid in the city has that kind of space. I mean, yes, it's a smaller community, but I think there's still a need for those types of opportunities.
Okay, well, and that's what I would hope we keep going and I agree with where we have apartment buildings and complexes and density, you know, concentrated in those areas. So I'm just, I'm trying to envision this model that we're working and I appreciate the work that's being done and having it here, but I'm also struggling with, it sure is a great wish list and I'm sorry that I kind of jumped to the financing.
Well, that's what I wanted to say. That's a good segue.
And I guess at some point, someone's got to play and speak over, okay, now let's get back to reality and help me prioritize some of this stuff. But it's great to have it down in paper and stuff and maybe what we should be doing is driving, you know, for higher density, you know, maybe that's the trade-offs. I don't know.
The best example I can think of, I go by almost every day and that's the new apartment complex right next to Buy Mart. It was packed and occupied before it was painted. Those kids, that's the neighborhood that has nothing in terms of parks and rent. Now, there is open space and the kids are making use of that because I walk through there and kind of keep an eye on it, but their closest playground is Buy Mart's parking lot, not a good choice. Or the street, again, not a real good choice. So we have some of those areas of density that need that. We also on the other side of my neighborhood have some privately owned open space and the kids use that too. So it's not like they're, they don't have anything, but we could be a little more forward-thinking about where our families are going to be and what they're going to do and what supports them.
Yes, no. And I mean, again, this is definitely something we heard about, but also from those members of the community in county hall meetings that they need for places for kids to just come and play. Yes, they can get to the beach if they can get to the beach and improvements in sidewalks and trails and ways they connect to other parts of the community are really important, but so are just places in their neighborhood to go. So I think it's not just one thing or another. I mean, all of these things are identified as important in the plan. And so giving you some sense of what some of the big priorities are, but yeah, you're going to have to spend some time working through some of the priorities that's back neighborhood in local scale as you move forward, in question. So, and I've just got a couple of slides here related to financing, which I can talk about before that. Anything else on priorities or projects that can generally make some sense? And I'm going to kind of finish up with some potential changes to this document to see if anybody has anything to add to that as well. So we've got, we've got some information about financing sources, sources of ways to pay for these types of things. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this, but different financing sources can be used to pay for different things. A lot of the time for any project, it often is going to take a combination of funding sources. So I'm just going to talk about what some of these are. System development charges, I think you're all familiar with those. They can really just be used to pay for things that are needed to support new growth and new residents, really. That can still be improvements to an existing park if there's people moving into that neighborhood in the future and you need more capacity there. But there's some things that systems development charges can't pay for. They can't pay for instant improvement to an existing park in an area where there's no growth really or.
It's hard to make sure that Deborah is there.
Still there, Deborah?
I know this was important to her. I want to see.
Maybe search for the new. There's a nice there.
I feel there.
No, there, awesome. Okay, thank you. General fund, I mean, that's really what Lincoln City uses in large part, particularly to pay for operation of park facilities and maintenance of them. Bond referendums often pay, used to pay for new facilities. That's how you financed your open space acquisition program in the past and did a fantastic job with that. I mean, really, I think particularly for a community this size, you have a larger open space system than just about anywhere I've been and I think that's like something I would be super proud of if I lived here. So that's fantastic and that might be something you look at in the future to help fund construction of additional neighborhood or community parks. Ticket sales, admissions passes, I mean, you're familiar with those. That's partly how you pay for operation of the community center here. Next one. There, somebody mentioned that it's really residents and volunteers that help build kids' park and so that's often a great source of funding that helps reduce or not as funding or just a resource, it helps reduce the costs. We've identified costs on those earlier slides. We really try to be frankly fairly conservative because we'd rather be conservative in that we didn't underestimate the costs. We'd rather overestimate the costs than underestimate them. And if you can get volunteer help, labor from residents, from the already National Guard or whoever it might be, that's a way to reduce the cost of things as well as to maintain them. You already have a lot of volunteer maintenance that goes into your open space system and somebody that coordinates that, so that's hugely beneficial to you all. Yes, I may add a couple of gifts of land that can be used in the future for new parks, so that can be pretty important. There's a whole range of different types of grants that can be used to pay for design and planning of facilities and parks, to pay for acquisition and construction of trails, public arts, programming and as Chester said, those are described in the document. And then here you've got the franchise tax that can be used, a portion of it, to pay for things that help support, that help provide services for visitors and support that visitor economy here. So there's some potential opportunities there as well. So that's kind of fixed the wide range of funding sources. We sort of identify in the plan is generally what these things can be used for, but on any given project, again, a lot of times it's really kind of a combination of different funding sources that you're going to, that you're going to bring there because that's just the nature of paying for parks and recreational facilities. I don't think you can add, but I don't mind.
I think we get a little bit creative when you look at the various departments that work here, other departments and I'm always looking for opportunities where I can piggyback different community objectives and goals to expenditure of infrastructure money. So like building a new hub station for your sewer system, can you turn that into a mini pocket park? Or, you know, there's lots and lots of examples of taking infrastructure dollars, whether sewer, water, roads and piggybacking on that, some of the values and some of the potentially even small portions of these projects onto those public expenditures.
Yeah.
And we get, we got a lot of criticism in Portland in the last couple of years with a couple of lawsuits about using sewer funds to pay for some parks facilities and there's been a lot of debate about it, but frankly, I think it's smart to think of how can you do that and do it legally? There's lots of examples.
To these things, you can co-locate some facilities. I've seen a lot of that in kind of the western suburbs, suburb of Portland, co-locating fire facilities next to parks. So we've got some ability to do that.
I think Astoria, the water reservoir last year and they built a park on top of it, if I'm not mistaken.
So whenever you can, you know, whenever you can sort of co-locate partner, use your money more efficiently, I think that's important. The other thing that's I think a kind of a key point on funding is, that I never wanted us to talk about was funding at actual parks director position here. So you've got somebody who is doing that and that's one of the things we mentioned in the plan as well. So I don't know if people have thoughts on that.
I think that's a serious priority. I think part of the reason we're behind Joseph is because we don't have a director.
I would agree and I used the example of the Taff property in the last parks board, meaning that when you get down to a letter from the city attorney going to the attorney from the school district and it goes in his inbox and then it comes from the school board back, there isn't a slower process in the world as far as trying to get things done through legal correspondence. So, you know, I understand the reasoning behind the cut back in the past, but we need to recognize that we're not still living in the past and we need to put that position back in to have those responsibilities spread out over people that already have full-time jobs is just not an efficient way of getting things done and it tends to end up in piecemeal projects and when you do small parts of projects over long periods of time, it ends up costing you more.
Nice. Most of South people going like this, can I ask about that?
Matt, I noticed there was a lack of, just throw on the table, a district, a park district. One of the things Lincoln City has is a huge draw from outside the city of users. You know, our school district is a county-wide school district and our school system draws from Rose Lodge to Depot Bay for Lincoln City schools. So you've got a lot of parents and families living out of the community, out of municipality, but yet huge users of the facilities and welcome to. They even line about the 50 cents more, you know, it's a community center, but in all seriousness, I think that ought to be on the table, not just for parks, but more, you know, cultural park, maybe combined. I think Newburgh has such a thing, Palatin does, it's a water and it might be a way to incorporate and let everybody share.
Yeah, so personally I'd say that's a great thought in terms of identifying.
And I'd love to see that show up.
In the plan.
Specifically in the plan.
The other thing about a park district and so typically, a park district essentially typically means formation of a special district providing parks. So it's formation of an additional government entity. And there's sort of a lot of the benefits, it comes at a cost to taxpayers because it establishes a tax rate for that district. But for cities, cities in Oregon have a permanent tax rate. You can't increase your, if people want more services, you can't increase your tax rate to provide more services. You need to take away other services to give them more on one thing if they want more on one thing. Creating a district is something that, so Walton Hills Park and Rec, that's the largest, it's the second largest park provider in the state, it's second, yeah, in Portland. It's the largest parks district in the state. There are other districts out there, North Placamas, and they were formed in large part to provide adequate resources to pay for not just construction, but also maintenance, really in large park maintenance and improvements of park facilities. So I would say, yeah, that's sort of a gap in terms of talking about funding or implementation in the plan. The plan ought to at least mention that you all, that's a big effort to formal park district, take a lot, a lot of discussion, but we should at least, I agree, we should at least mention it in the plan because it's one of the few, besides bond measures to fund capital, it's one of the few ways to actually generate enough money to pay, to pay to make even improvements. So that's my quick, I'm asking like a few cents up here. So thank you for that. Anything else, any other thoughts on funding there? Again, recognizing this is kind of a quick one to do.
Matt, could you include this in the report next time around? That's very clear delineation for me.
Sure. Yes.
Does Lincoln get public-private partnerships anywhere in funding?
It does in the chapter or the section of the document on it. It's not sort of as explicit here because partly it's kind of mixed in here, but yes, I think in the, in the document itself, you talked about it.
Yeah, there's four pages.
There's, this is, yeah, this is sort of four pages squeezed down to this one table. So just the last thing I wanted to do was just a quick review of the changes that we so far as sort of staff and consultants have identified based on what we've heard from the parks, the project advisory committee and the parks board so far. So next slide. And so the one thing great, we've kind of already talked about really in terms of things emphasized within the document, I'll kind of go over these all anyway, but just mentioned that the things are great, we've sort of talked about. So there are a lot of comments that were really about, well, we emphasize what things are prioritized. are priorities. So I think we've talked a lot about neighborhood, kind of community park themes or talked through neighborhood parks, community parks and pocket parks. And we've talked a lot about emphasizing meaning of children, including teens. We've talked a fair bit about updating those recommendations for some of those specific facilities. So the community center, roads and et cetera. And then there are some other things that were more kind of structural changes or additions to the plan. One recommendation was to include an executive summary, I think is a good idea. And that's a place where I think we can really do some of these things we've already talked about and emphasize or focus on priorities in that executive summary. There was a request that we include some timelines for implementation. And there were also some suggestions, my head's in the way again, about some reorganization of sections of the plan just to kind of address some of these suggestions for what we focus on or emphasize. And then a number of specific edits. So we got edits from a variety of folks. I got a page of edits from some of our council just as I walked in today. So, so there's a number of those kind of things we need to do as well. So as well as everything else that we heard from you all today, which I haven't had a chance to call you into the presentation, so that's kind of the next thing we would do would be to update this plan, to incorporate all of those suggestions we've gotten. And then again, it would come back to you all on the 12th or to the council on the 12th correction. So that's, that's where we think we're headed. But is there anything we didn't talk about that's important in terms of getting from the draft master plan to the final one? So whenever I don't hear anything, I assume it's all good. So that's awesome. And we actually finished ahead of schedule, so it's sort of support talking or something. Talking about throwing links ourselves. That was it for my presentation, just kind of making sure that we, we had good direction for moving forward from all of you. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next one.
Anything else? Next slide.
Man.
Yeah, Deborah?
Do you feel like you have everything you need from the council?
I feel like I do. How do you feel?
Okay. Okay, well, I, I hope so. I wasn't able to hear all of what we said today, but it sounds like a good discussion and I will, I'll watch it on streaming video. So, but I just, you know, since this is your only opportunity before the public hearing, I just want to make sure that the council and you are both comfortable that we're going to get a cohesive plan now that really reflects all the work that the hard work we've spent over the last nine months. And, and, and of course, priorities. If you're good with that, I am very happy and thank you all.
Thanks, Deborah. I mean, you and I may need to talk about some of the details, but otherwise, yeah, I'm feeling, I believe. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all.